Good clip and Rachel for the presentation. Great appreciation. Of course, we have questions for our REW team. I have just one question that I hope is pretty simple and straightforward. In the list of sources that you presented when you were keeping up salaries around the state, thank you for giving a deep list on that. There's just one I was familiar with, just Onet Online. Could you just tell us who Onet Online is? Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. And Commissioner, do you have any questions? Yes, first of all, thank you for the presentation. I think as commissioners have been waiting a long time to get to this point. I say a long time because for us, we want everything done our way. And I know the employees are certainly deserving and appreciate it. But this question is actually for our task team in regards to actual dates. Because of, you know, we know that we're pretty far ahead. But what does it mean in regards to when are the employees? When might they see, you know, the principal?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Beal, I would hope to have implemented for sure. We'll have implemented by July 1. If we can do it sooner than that, we're doing it sooner than that already. Two months at the end of this year. As soon as REW can meet with the departments and the PPAC. So we need to get it done by beginning of this year. The day it's possible, smooth with the departments and the PPAC works between the departments and the consultants. Probably the biggest challenge. And then the biggest challenge we have internally is finding funding to implement this. What I mentioned, what I was mentioning, we're upwards of a million dollars to implement this compensation study. What I mentioned, this can help us to identify where, back the last four or five years of budgeted expenses, we can probably provide cost savings on some of this. It's going to be a combination of the cost savings, the new growth that's projected in the assessment office and the GRT. This could be anywhere from millions or billions of dollars to implement.
All right, and thank you very much. And just as a reminder for all, this must be reoccurring. So, you know, the team is working hard to make sure we're going forward for people, secure what those guys are going to come for and that's very important. I just want to say something to the employees because I know we've said this many a times, but I just wanted to give you say that how much we appreciate each and every one of you. You know that we, commissioners, know that without you all, the work doesn't make sense. And the community, I want them to know that because of these programs that we have services that are for the public, they don't happen without you. So we're very grateful. And so I hope this is something that you will be beneficial for forward. And thank you for your patience when it's been a while we've had with that particular compensation subject. So just appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Beal. Very well said. Thank you very much. Any further questions or comments from the team or from you, Mr. Ramirez?
Well, we're going to try to push and get this done as quickly as possible. The components of the year, once you get it, please go find your feedback to the unit to REW, to Clint, to Rachel, and begin those conversations, whatever those have been fulfilled and done.
Thank you. That's a very good reminder. Mr. Ramirez, Mr. Beal, thank you very much for presenting this morning. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, this moves us along to item 9A, which is public comment. A quick request for folks in the room and or listening. For public comments, if you were here to raise your voice on item 10A or 11A. So 10A, which is the hearing on appeal of the decision regarding tax gravel products. 11A, the discussion around the resolution about grazing permits and legislation. If you were here to address either of those things, we ask that you please wait until that moment on the agenda so that we can kind of create a more cohesive, in-context conversation. So all of the topics, all the comments are held together at that conversation, if that makes sense. So if you have a comment, concern that you'd like to come up and speak to us, we will first take anyone in the room. And then we'll turn on the phone and take anyone who wants to dial in to 575-737-6310. And if you do approach with your comment, please tell us your name, where you're from. And you have three minutes. And I will try to kind of gently raise my glass to you. If you have like 20 to 30 seconds left, just so no one's taking too much of us. So is there anyone who would like to make public comments when we can? Yeah, come on up and speak into the mic. And you can start with your name, where you're from, and we will very gently turn off the lights.
If you had any concerns about the asphalt comments, was that a problem?
If you would please wait until that part. Yeah, that is the next item. So if you're here to speak regarding that hearing or the legislation on grazing permits, let's just hold so that you can create a cohesive conversation. Thank you. Stay tuned. Stay tuned. Mr. Toki. Again, your full name or your from, and share with us your thoughts. We're here to listen, to learn, and hopefully help again.
Okay, thank you. Neil Toki from Yausen, Long. I was at the meeting in Talpa that highlighted a lot of county policies. It was very good until it got to the point of our speed bumps. And that felt like a punchline back to me. A previous commissioner hated me as I interfered with her, in terms of her right to cast out speed bumps as per the county. But I want to read from, this is Senate Bill 52 to the 46th legislature relating to municipal health municipalities prohibiting municipalities from erecting and maintaining speed-controlled devices on streets. There's a, when Bill said, there's a lot of information in Bill, but I'll get to the end of that. I'll get to the whereas. Whereas speed bumps were initially conceived to deal with liability issues on private property, mall apartments, and were paid for with private commercial money and written off as a cost to doing business. And whereas, as municipalities have used them to transfer responsibility from speeders, responsibility for speeders from law enforcement to road department expenditures, and are exclusively handed out like political campaigns. Whereas our road gravel roads get ignored and neglected as a result of road parking priorities. Switching in practice to speed bumps and paving, being enacted by the legislature as a partial solution that municipalities requesting money from the state for paving projects be required to provide documented proof to the state that they have repealed their speed bump resolutions to comply with this change in state law. It's a violation of anti-donation. And we've got table at the end, at the end of the section, that not being enacted, but it could be revised.
Thank you, Mr. Toki.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who could give a comment on public salary? I'm just waiting. If you want to contribute, you can like follow me with whatever it is on your mind. If you're willing, you can dial in to 575-737-6310. So pick up the phone right here. We have three minutes. So it's just one phone, one minute to fill up our space to see if we can. I'm waiting to see if that happens. I'm sort of thinking about the week now, and it's been a bit because we have very needed to try and go over, we're doing our best to make things. And I trust we can, we're still trying to hear this. So it is 575-737-6310. And again, we are hoping to hear now is any comments other than on the next two items, which is the hearing on appeal of the decision about the tax gravel products project and the resolution discussion about the legislation and the legislation. Those two things are three minutes. So if you have something you have to talk about, or if it simply counts, please give all 575-737-6310. We'll give it just a few seconds. If you have something else, we'll be calling. Okay, then that said, I think we can go ahead and move on to item 10A. Maybe this last motion for the, I think, is a second. Thank you, Commissioner. We know that last year, we have a motion for a five-minute break because we've already been on a roll.
Mr. Ramirez?
Yes.
Are you sure of that?
Yes.
Are you sure, Madam?
Yes.
Yes, okay. We'll be back in five minutes. Thanks.
Okay, I sent it to the testers. Hopefully, it's kind of stretched out. It's like, I don't know. I didn't do it, so I can't make it right.
Was it format? Did it come in JPEG or?
It was a JPEG, but he could stretch it out to the right side. So I resized it and then sent it to him. So hopefully, it might be a little bit.
Thank you, everybody. If we could start gathering again, we continue with our county business this morning with our motion to come back into our review session. Thank you, Commissioner Beal. We'll start soon. Thank you, Commissioner Beal. About this whole, or would you come back into the committee? Mr. Beal? Yes. Mr. Beal? Are you sure now?
Yes.
Sure, right? Yes, thank you very much. We are now on item 10A, which is a public hearing. And I have a little bit of explanation before we, but I mentioned this in the spot here. And I would like to further back up what I want to try to explain. Because as commissioners, depending on what is for us, we have certain laws that we have to follow, certain statutes that you send out and abide by. And one of those is that when we're making a little private agency, making a determination about the rights of individuals, making them be part of community term that is being followed. Because that means wanting to make sure one vote has extra. There's more, there's included in more, and that is why I appear to make sure panel. And because last year I would send a number of emails about this particular issue, I am going to step aside, accuse myself, but the last year around this hearing, because my participation was actually a bit more lax in terms of, in terms of this. So if there's any clarification you can add before I step aside, I will literally decide to send another one.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I think it's, it leaves you to judge yourself on that. It is your decision unless you're trying to force to employ it. It's of some greater potential for conflict and issues or as far as communications. And personally, as makers, we need to, if you don't believe in peace, we're not good. It mostly may hold you on the other side. But was you not there to reveal something because of communication and that?
Yeah.
That applies to all of us and we should afford this and the others and the viewers. And it's just a good note to have a criminal background. Because if they want to protect mutual feelings and their concerns and their issues, then they cannot, you try to. And that applies several occasions and. So it's just a good note to do. With the research, the electives and that, that like the item that we've seen that this. But basically, this is a world, world justice now. And so the fact that that is.
Thank you, Mr. Beal. And I'm just going to observe the impact of the end of time coming to make a change in myself. And I think you said ago, it's a reminder for all of us, not just the public, for us here too. Mostly the something, you may know, there's something on the front of the country. Now, only there, but that's for now, whatever, the same thing. All in, but with that, I'm going to move on to the second review session now.
Thank you, Chair Rush. And thank all of you for your patience and why we're here to put the next next item on the agenda. But the next item on the agenda is a public hearing, which I would like to open the public hearing. When I read the, when it comes to agenda. Discussion consideration in the series regarding the proposal decision made by the House of Commerce for decision on December 19th, 2022. The decision referring to the decision made by the Land District of the legal market for review and paralegal protection of corporate owners. Doing business as house, private cars. The operation of a portable transport plant. The 648 was also a land which is owned by Ford Exeter first. Now being part of us, thus the subject. And the field is located across nothing, 8.5 miles west of the intersection of US Highway 64 and New Mexico State Highway 522. And further described as being in section 100 of 26, north lane, we have a beach house on New Mexico. And so I'd like to explain the features and the power for the hearing. And the first part will be the other thing to the comments, the type of presentation. And this will be about 15, 20, 20, 20, when I ask to look at the first and the final.